Be advised that proper notice has been given by the Township Council in accordance with the Sunshine Law in the following manner. Notice advertising the Burlington County Times and Camden Carrier Post on January 4th, 2019, and posted on the bulletin board on the same date. Mr. Lyon?
Here.
Mr. Romando?
Here.
Ms. Pareo?
Here.
Mr. Varell?
Here.
Mr. Cattran?
Here. Okay, we have some items on the action meeting. The first is, I need a motion to approve the minutes for March 26th, action work and closed session meeting.
So moved.
Mr. Lyon?
Aye.
Mr. Romando?
Aye.
Ms. Pareo?
Aye.
Mr. Varell?
Aye.
Mr. Cattran?
Aye.
Next, I need a motion to approve the minutes for the April 2nd public and closed session meeting.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Lyon?
I am.
You are not.
I am abstaining.
Mr. Romando?
Aye.
Ms. Pareo?
Aye.
Mr. Varell?
Aye.
Mr. Cattran?
Aye.
Next, I need a resolution approving revenue license number 569 for Prince of Ron Inc.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Lyon?
Aye.
Mr. Romando?
Aye.
Ms. Pareo?
Aye.
Mr. Varell?
Aye.
Mr. Cattran?
Aye. It was Resolution 2019-104. This is Resolution 2019-105. It's a resolution requesting approval of items of revenue and appropriation in accordance with the appropriate law for the 2019 packet or ticket.
Motion. Second.
Mr. Lyon?
Aye.
Mr. Romando?
Aye.
Ms. Pareo?
Aye.
Mr. Varell?
Aye.
Mr. Cattran?
Aye.
Next, this is Resolution 2019-106. This is a resolution authorizing grass cutting for 215 Leon Avenue.
Hold on one second.
But I can tell them.
There's an addition to that. I think I didn't change the thing on there. Yeah, I didn't change it on the title, though.
Is this the two of them? I have the two addresses.
And 48 Spring Crest.
48 Spring Crest, right. Okay, before we vote on that, I just have a question, maybe for Jeff. 48 Spring Crest is owned by Deutsche Bank. Is it possible that they would qualify as, or is it empty? And they might be qualified for one of the, we start by the $1,500 a day if you don't make this non-derelict?
I'll double check. I don't think it was on that list. I think abandoned.
It just says it.
If it's being marketed, it doesn't meet the requirement.
Oh, okay.
It's got a for-sale sign or anything.
I don't know. I just know that according to our tax records, it's owned by Deutsche Bank.
I believe it does have a for-sale sign.
Yeah, and it's being marketed, and we can't buy that.
Okay, okay. Just making sure. So Resolution 2019-106 is the resolution authorizing grass cutting for 215 Leon and 48 Spring Crest Drive.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Lyon?
Aye.
Mr. Romando?
Aye.
Ms. Pareo?
Aye.
Mr. Varell?
Aye.
Mr. Cattran?
Aye.
Next, this is Resolution 2019-107. This is authorizing the closeout change order number one and final payment to R.E. Pearson Construction Company for the 2018 road.
Motion. Second.
Mr. Lyon?
Aye.
Mr. Romando?
Aye.
Ms. Pareo?
Aye.
Mr. Varell?
Aye.
Mr. Cattran?
Aye.
Next, this is Resolution 2019-108. This is a resolution requesting approval of the items of revenue and appropriation from the New Jersey Department of Transportation fiscal year 2019, safe streets to transit, Route 130 pedestrian crosswalk safety improvements.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Lyon?
Aye.
Mr. Romando?
Aye.
Ms. Pareo?
Aye.
Mr. Varell?
Aye.
Mr. Cattran?
Aye.
Next, this is Resolution 2019-109. This is a resolution requesting approval of items of revenue and appropriation from the New Jersey Department of Transportation fiscal year 2019, municipal aid program for Conroe Road improvements.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Lyon?
Aye.
Mr. Romando?
Aye.
Ms. Pareo?
Aye.
Mr. Varell?
Aye.
Mr. Cattran?
Aye.
Next, this is Resolution 2019-110. This is authorizing a closeout change order number one and final payment for, to R.E. Pearson Construction Company, Inc., for the Hartford Road reconstruction project.
Motion. Second.
Mr. Lyon?
Aye.
Mr. Romando?
Aye.
Ms. Pareo?
Aye.
Mr. Varell?
Aye.
Mr. Cattran?
Aye.
And finally, Resolution 2019-111 is the resolution authorizing executive session to discuss the following items, towing contract negotiation, or I'm sorry, the towing contract and negotiations for the purchase of a municipal lead.
So moved.
Listen.
Mr. Lyon?
Aye.
Mr. Romando?
Aye.
Ms. Pareo?
Aye.
Mr. Varell?
Aye.
Mr. Cattran?
Aye.
Next, we have some motions, a motion authorizing the payment of bills, including all purchases made under the cooperative purchasing agreement.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Lyon?
Aye.
Mr. Romando?
Aye.
Ms. Pareo?
Aye.
Mr. Varell?
Aye.
Mr. Cattran?
Aye.
Next, I needed a motion granting percatal license to the following four businesses, cars by Guito and Rodriguez Company, 207-28 Carriage Lane, Capital One Auto Group Two, Inc., by 150-9 Carriage Lane, Tunnel Motors, Inc., 207A-3 Carriage Lane, and S Shops, LLC, 1812 Underwood Boulevard, Suite 3, 4, and 5.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Lyon?
Aye.
Mr. Romando?
Aye.
Ms. Pareo?
Aye.
Mr. Varell?
Aye.
Mr. Cattran?
Aye. Okay, so first, we need to check our calendars. We discussed months ago, and we discussed briefly in the last meeting, that we wanted to set a meeting for the public to understand the co-negotiations, and we really required everyone here to be here so that we could look at a date that might work for everyone. This would be a special meeting to discuss that, and I guess our first thing is, it's going to have to be in this room. Do we have any Mondays or Wednesdays that are clear in this room that we could have that meeting?
At night, yeah. I would say it.
Anybody have an issue with Mondays?
The only question I had, Mr. President, was if you wanted, I know we get, our agenda gets lighter through the summer. If we wanted to consolidate two work sessions to one, and then use Tuesday for the meeting. It doesn't matter to me. I would just, if that works better for folks.
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to talk about, I mean, you know what? We should probably talk about that. Where is that?
It's number three.
Number three. So we're going to kind of combine our discussion on one and three. And so, and we're going to put one and three together and add my caveat, which is, my work may involve me being involved until, me not being able to attend a meeting until seven, until after 7:30, meeting probably 8 o'clock on Tuesdays coming up. It's not been, the exact hours have not been aligned yet, but, so, so we may, rather than make that designation, I'm just saying that any date we pick, if it's a Tuesday, it may have to be an 8 o'clock start. So, I'm not saying it has to be a Tuesday. You know, we may end up, I just got to get some more definition from work. We've adjusted schedules in the past for various reasons to accommodate council's need for change. So right now, I would say, I mean, we could certainly, as we're adjusting the summer hours, and Jamie has been kind enough to provide us with the dates of the meetings, and, so let's start with those first, and that'll help us get an idea. So, the July 2nd public meeting, I know that some folks, I think, Tyler, you had a conflict on the 2nd.
That's actually, yeah.
If there's other folks that have travel plans or vacation plans on the 2nd, then we should probably adjust that. I'm not sure if, when these changes will kick in for my schedule. My guess, by July 2nd, they will be in place, but I'm not sure. So, I won't know for about another two weeks. So let's try to schedule, if we take the 2nd of July out, the 9th is the Jake's Place, potentially the Jake's Place grand opening. Can everybody make the Jake's Place grand opening?
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes. Ken?
What time is it?
Yes, I'll be there.
Okay. That's 5:30. They were looking at 5:00 or 5:30. I want to suggest 5:30 on the 9th, and that'll give us plenty of time to get to the, get here for the work session after.
They followed up with another email today asking, so can I confirm tomorrow?
Yes.
Yeah, sir. Yep.
There's arms on paper about it.
Yeah, it said opening in July, but I just skimmed it because I didn't.
No date.
It didn't give a date.
That's good.
Maybe we'll get another, or 5:30 on the 2nd.
No.
So the 2nd would be the public meeting normally. Do we feel comfortable moving the public meeting to the 9th? I mean, I think it's going to be, I think that's going to be a shorter meeting than a work session, especially in the summer.
That works.
So if we move, if we eliminate the 2nd and make the 9th the public, and then the 23rd the normal work session, does that make sense for everybody?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have, next, we have August. August 6th is Delray Night Out, so that's going to have to be moved as well. I, you know, I assume that that would go to the 13th?
From the public meeting, Darren?
Yeah. And then the 27th for the work session. And again, we typically have smaller agendas in the summer. It makes that one work session busier, certainly, but it's, can we help you, sir? Are you lost? Actually, we moved that here because there was, there was items in the room. So, so we'll move that, we'll do the same thing, the 13th and then the 27th. Right now, the times will remain the same at 7 o'clock. I ask your indulgence for the rest of the council, but we have, as soon as I get more information, I will pass that along, and we may need to kind of shake the schedule up again, and I apologize to everybody, but it's something that I could not avoid. Work sessions, so this is changed to that, and that's, and we're good.
Do you want to keep the public meeting the same time if Jake's Place is 5:30?
Yeah, I think so.
I'm just saying, hour and a half.
Yeah. The opening, you know, it's 5:30, it's going to be a brief ceremony, and then it's going to be the kids can literally go in and play.
I'm just saying, I don't know, I mean, they would expect us to be there longer or what, so I guess we don't.
They didn't indicate that. I told them that that was a work session night. Push comes to shovel, we're a few minutes late, we can always start the meeting a little late.
It's already advertised for 7:00, so we can start any time after.
Yeah, right. Because we have to change that, we just have to consider it's a meeting, right? So we don't have to re-advertise that because it's going from a work session to a public meeting.
They're all advertised for action.
Are they advertised for the same time?
Yeah.
Right. And the action will still be taken, so anybody wanting to be present is duly informed and wouldn't be prejudiced, so I wouldn't.
So do we need to make a, we don't need to, do we need to advertise it then locally, the cancellation of the two meetings? Do we need to put that in the paper?
No.
Or it could just be on the website, that's been changed, and here if necessary. That way, we don't have to spend any money doing that. If we do have to adjust.
You notify the paper. Yeah, you have to.
They have the option.
They have the option to advertise or not advertise.
Right, but we're not paying.
They already have the dates for the year.
I'm sure the sun will put it, the darn sun will put it up.
Yeah.
We'll put it on the website. And even though we're canceling, the work sessions, we're still going to be here in the building for a public meeting.
Right, right.
It's not like there's going to be anybody here.
Except, so the two public sessions will be canceled. Okay.
Just to clarify again, the 72 has been canceled, and the 79 has been transformed into a...
No, the 79 has also been canceled.
It's also been canceled.
Oh, no, no.
No, it's not.
I'm sorry, that's the same. It's just the August. The August 6th has been canceled, okay?
79 became a public, and 79 before the 7 o'clock is 5:30 for Jake's Place.
If it is not going to be a traditional work session, and we're really trying to get the word out on this co-meeting, it might be a prudent policy decision to advertise for the conversion of the 79 into a co-meeting.
Is that going to be the co-meeting?
Well, that's not the co-meeting.
We didn't talk about that.
I'm not going to talk about that.
I think he was right, because we did talk about co. in the very beginning, and I think you, you just took it as maybe that's part of it.
So it won't be a work session, it'll just be a general public, actually.
Right.
Then never mind.
As of now.
Ignore what I said, please. Sorry, I just wanted to.
So now, I mean.
So I think, so I think we're good. We're good. Cancel the 2nd of July. The 9th becomes the public meeting. August 6th is Delray Night Out, and that'll be as normal, correct? Oh, no, I'm sorry, that's canceled.
That's canceled.
And then August 13th becomes the public meeting, and August 27th becomes the work session.
I mean, it's still a work session anyway.
27 doesn't change.
So you're just canceling July 2nd and August 6th, and making July 9th and August 13th public, correct?
Very good, Jim. Good spot.
So June, July, and August, we all only have one work session.
Right.
But June's already changed.
Yes, because of the election.
Right. So, and we're okay with that, I think. Next, we'll, now, for the co-meeting, do we want to have that on an off night so that we can, we don't have to worry about scheduling? And we want to do that on Monday? I mean, is a Monday good for anybody, or no?
That's fine.
Depends what Monday you're talking about, in July or June.
Depends what our issues.
Because June, the 3rd, 10th, and 24th are out, they're all Mondays.
Okay.
And the 17th is out, so they're Monday.
Okay, so July, I say we get past, certainly get past the 4th of July week, and we can look at 8, 15, 22, 29. What do you think?
15, 22, 29 work for me.
Okay, 15 sounds like it's better. Everybody get 15?
Yes.
This is it.
Good for you?
No.
It's not good for you?
I'll be on vacation that week.
Well, you don't have to.
But I, I mean, I could get somebody to cover it.
Yeah, that's fine.
Jeff, are you back?
I'll be on vacation.
Just remote access.
We will not see you. 15? All right, so how about 22nd?
Jeffrey James should be here.
How about the 22nd?
July 22nd.
Yeah. Is that better for you? Well, it doesn't matter, Jamie.
Your leg was, you're okay, 22nd.
22nd, 22nd.
I got you, okay.
22nd, good for anybody? Good.
And staff is, professionals.
Yeah, do we need to reach out?
I'll text her. I'll confirm his schedule, but I don't think it's going to be an issue. He should, he should be able to be here, but I have to just confirm with him.
Monday, July 22nd?
Yes.
What time is that?
7:00 P.M.
7:01, 2, 7:00 P.M.
Yes.
Jamie, will you be reaching out to Mika, or do you want?
I'm texting right now.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Let's see, make sure that she's open before we schedule it, because she was an integral part of the program there. Okay, so while we're waiting for that, we'll continue. Okay, so next, we have our discussion on the Chicken pilot to ordinance program. Al, this is going to be your time, Sean. Anybody have any questions about the changes there? There were the agendas highlighted in yellow, and then there was one change that was, or one group of changes that was in blue.
The blue was the existing ordinance, and the yellow were the changes. So the blue, they want taken out and replaced with the yellow.
Are there any more copies of the color?
No.
38911. So let's do it by number, so we make sure.
Yeah, I know.
So. 38912. Yeah, I mean, as long as.
If Stu.
If Stu, the solicitor's office is okay, I mean, I would defer to them, they were in the trenches there.
Then he should have a copy of the document, that he can bring back to some other.
No, we, we emailed it. This is just for printing purposes. I might could briefly report to council. As it pertains to most of the changes, as proposed by individuals involved with the Chicken ordinance program in Delray, it's a pilot program, so most of the changes essentially would pertain to amending the ordinance to reflect the fact that this is a permanent installation moving forward. What we can do is, and we've done this with other towns, is we would essentially prepare a draft. Everything that's necessarily proposed as highlighted by these individuals might not be reflected in this draft, but then that draft will be considered by you, and we can get feedback from the interests of parties, and at that point in time, it could either either be introduced or.
These are, I read through these, and there was a lot of the, you know, it was just kind of legalese to me, and the sizing, that kind of stuff. So what I'm suggesting is, is either one of these a final version, which, the blue is the final version?
No, the yellow.
The yellow is the final version?
That's a suggestion. Those are their proposed changes.
There are suggestions, yes.
The ultimate policy decision as to whether those changes are appropriate will be for the governing body to consider, and what I'm saying is, it might be more prudent to get a draft in your hands rather than do this.
Yeah, I.
Yes, I agree.
I just didn't want to get started on drafting anything until I got the green light.
Yeah, well, so let me just say this. Did you review the changes they selected, or will you review that?
Of course I will review it.
Of course.
No, of course, it'll be reviewed. I've started to review it. It's just, unless we're going to have a line-by-line discussion of every change that they proposed, if that's something that we want to do tonight, we'd have to discuss it line by line, in terms of how the pre-imposed proposed changes look. I'm saying it might be better encapsulated in the draft than have council review it.
And then if you would, I read it, I didn't even realize that I was reading the same items twice. So why don't we do this? Let's do it, let's make the draft, and keep the highlights of what's new, if you would.
So, yeah, I can do that, I can prepare a draft, and also a brief memo, kind of summarizing what the substantive changes are, so you know what really what to focus on.
Right, that's the way we like to do it. So that, you know, frankly, there's a lot of language that I know needs to be in there, and what I'd like to do is just to see if there's anything that really is going to require a policy change for anything. Doesn't seem like it is, but I'd like you to review it, let us know. Of course, anybody on council have a question about changes.
No, I think we should just make sure the draft is given to the Chicken Advisory Board, just so, you know, work with them, they're the ones providing the suggestions, and if they have an objection, or really strongly opposed, or for something, we would like to know why.
Isn't that what they proposed?
But if there's something that doesn't cut out legally. If there's something essentially that I might push back on during the drafting, I might decide.
Oh, if there's something, but not.
Yeah, there's no need to. But of course, I think Councilman Brawne's a great point. That's the way we've collaborated before in other towns, the parties that are on the ground, that are actually running the program, they're, but it's pretty important before the final draft that you introduce.
Yeah. That makes sense. Okay, so next, we have some sewer claims that Jeff is going to tell us all about.
There are five sewer claims. Do you want me to take them one by one? I mean, she's making recommendations to adjust them all, and all the adjustments are based on the information that was provided. She reviewed it, and to me, they're all reasonable. Unless you want me to go one by one, if you're okay with it, we would do a resolution for the next public meeting to take action to reduce it to the numbers as recommended by the backside.
Okay. I need. And Charles?
I'm fine with where it looks like. I'm all right with my family.
Okay, I agree. Okay, you initiate, you're, yes, so we'll assume that we're all good with that. Please do that for the next meeting. And next are the grants. Is that Jim or Jeff going to talk to us about?
Yeah, well, the next.
I'll take that as Jim.
So the next round of grants are being requested, the applications are being classified to TOT. We routinely do this. This is the municipal lead, bikeway, and safe streets of transit application or grant programs. We applied last year for municipal lead for Conroe, and that's where we got some of the money, but we need more to finish Conroe. So I guess it's my understanding we probably reapply for Conroe, but second half of Conroe to apply that all to one project, and do it all at one time.
Okay.
And then the other two are bikeway and safe streets of transit. We did just get actually a safe streets of transit grant for certain improvements on Route 130. I believe we applied for adding in pedestrian crosswalk lighting, which is going to be probably a first for a major DOT highway like this in New Jersey, so I don't know how for a major DOT highway like this in New Jersey, so I don't know how that's going to play out, but it's, it's pretty amazing that you've got, this is like your third safe streets of transit grant you've gotten in like the last five, five years, and it's a highly competitive grant, there's only like four or five towns that get the grant each year, it's only like a million dollars in the pot when you keep getting money, but I think that's attributable to because Route 130 is so dangerous. So, yeah, we would have to come up with a project to apply for, if you want to apply for that grant and for bikeway. The bikeway we've been applying for, putting in a bike path along Hartford Road, we haven't been successful with that.
Let me ask you a question regards to the money that we just got for the signal, the first, the one we just got. Does that cover all the areas on 130, or can we go back, since we would be one of the first to institute this? Do we need other areas on 130 that this grant that we just received won't cover?
Uh, I believe we only applied for about two or three, both pedestrian crossings, the one at Holy Cross and the one by Temi Chase, well, no, by Hunter's Pond. I don't think we applied for the major signalized intersections.
Why don't we do that, if we're hot on this, and we could be the, the sample town, why don't we look at doing that?
Essentially, what the project is, when the light, when somebody hits a pedestrian button, there'd be like flashing beacons in the crosswalk that would flash when the pedestrian buttons hit, and the, and the light, the light would still be red, but the, the flashing beacons are supposed to give a supplemental alert.
So, so the state had, you know, we were always told that the state was gonna, if we started touching anything, we'd have to approve the whole deal, is this gonna do that?
Uh, what, like completely improve the intersection, so?
These are not intersections, thank God.
Yeah, these are just.
You know, I remember, I remember being told that, you know, if, if we say, hey, we'd like to add anything, then they're gonna want us to bring the whole area up the spec.
The one thing they asked for is that they asked for us to sign off on a liability issue, as we would assume the liability if there were any improvements on an intersection.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I would have to look at it, well, usually, if you touch it, if you try to touch a traffic signal with any sort of project, you've got to improve the signal to be up in accordance with current standards, usually it's ADA standards.
Right.
The ADA. The components of the signal are lacking, but as far as.
I don't want to, I just don't want to get us to go down the path.
Oh, yeah.
A thousand dollars, and we have to spend.
We'd have to set up a meeting with DOT pretty soon, because we even, we have the one pot of money we have to use in figuring out, like, are they truly going to allow this? I don't know if local aid is actually talking to, you know, access and engineering to determine whether or not they're even going to let us do this, so it was a little, you know, I was shocked that we actually got there.
So how soon do we need an answer on this one?
Uh, yeah, the grants are due at some point in July.
July 19.
Yeah, so I have to draw.
How fast can you get a meeting together to find out?
Probably take a couple weeks.
But if not, then what do we have to do, come up with another plan if they won't allow us?
We have to figure out if we want to apply for something else. Safe streets of transit really are supposed to be for, you know, improving areas where there's dense transit, so I think we applied it because there's like bus stops along Route 130.
No, exactly.
And sidewalks too, but we're running, we're running out of eligible funds.
But we get that money for these projects, so if they say that we can't, let's say they didn't talk to each other.
Yeah.
What do we do? Do we come up to a, are we allowed to use that money towards something else?
Um, yeah, well, we'd have to get local aid approval for that. What you're saying is the money that they just gave us, if the DOT doesn't let us do that project, yeah, I mean, there's, I don't know, good question. I, I mean, I, they'd have to be receptive to it, considering they gave us the grant money, but.
Right, and that's what I would think, but I guess I would think we should have that meeting first to see if they'll allow us to do it, and then we make a determination and do the meeting as possible.
Yeah.
Yeah, we need to, we need to, we need to know, A, if we can do that, before we apply for more of the same, we need to know that we can do that.
Right.
So.
I'll set a meeting right away with local aid, we do have some time, and then for the bikeway.
We do, except that we're, we're in a limited number of meetings, so what is the, I just want to see, I'm concerned about giving you enough time to turn these around, maybe I'll just put the notes apart.
By our meeting dates?
Well, at that, by the workshop in June, we would have an answer.
All right, and that'll be the time. The deadline is July 19, so.
July 9.
As long as we have, we have the time, even if we kind of do an authorization to do it and submit it at the same time.
So the June 25th workshop, we'll have resolutions on. For the grants.
So you're just making notes.
And I'm assuming for the bikeway, we're gonna just reapply for Hartford Road?
Is there any other projects? But did.
But we never get it.
But we never get it, so I thought we applied to Bridgeborough, didn't we apply?
We did one time, and we didn't get it.
I think Bridgeborough, we applied for the sidewalks, for stations of transit.
And what's, and the bike, is there, is there?
There's no bikeway now on, on Hartford Road, so the idea would be to put something in where there's probably in the pavement, you know, it's restructure roads, so there's a bike lane.
There's, there's a lot of usage for bicycles on Hartford.
Oh, yeah, we always put it there, but we never get it, that's.
Yeah, I mean, but there is a need.
Let me ask a question, does Morristown have a bike, bike lane?
Yeah, Morristown.
One Hartford?
I don't think they have a, I think they might have segments on Hartford.
I think if Morristown, if there, I think if there was a road that had a bike lane from another town, and we were to adjoin it, I don't see how they'd be against.
What, what you need is, you need like better, like master plan document for bike trails, we don't have that in Delaware, so that, that's like step one, you need some sort of formal policy on bike lanes and bike paths, on where they should go, that you need them, that's what the DOT is looking for, to get money, so we don't really have that, and so we're kind of, we're going into disadvantage at some point, you don't have it anywhere in town, so.
We, we like doing that, part of the master plan system. So at that point, maybe you should make sure that we do that. But what else will we think then for this bikeway thing?
And the only other time we've talked about trail or something, is trying to do something to connect Notre Dame with Delaware Community Park, so we need like a bridge over Sutro.
Would that qualify for this?
If you say it's a bikeway. You make it a trail, and the trail has to be wider, and it would have to, you know.
It's obviously a bikeway.
Yeah.
I always considered it a bikeway.
Well, why don't we do that?
It's gonna be looked at the same, yeah, we can do that, whatever you think's more is a greater.
The only other thing that I would, I would think that we should maybe consider is that with the, with the trail that the county's doing, maybe we do some sort of, you know, something that goes from their trail to something of interest in our town, you know, maybe from this, I don't, I don't have.
I thought it up there, I don't know where you're going.
Off the top of my head.
Again, that, that goes back to first. I go back to first, said, is you, you need some sort of planning document to kind of identify where you want these trails and how they're going to connect to each other.
Well, I'm saying, the county has their trail, if we look at that trail and say.
It's open July 19, June 6.
What is that?
Bid's open June 6.
Do we, so we don't know exactly what the?
Yeah, we do.
Oh, we do, and so do we, is there anything, any part of that path that goes past anything in town that's just a short hop away that we could say, look, we're trying to tie it into the county trail system?
Not really. No, it sticks along Creek Road and Bridgeborough. Comes out, it comes out, it comes out from the Rancoas Greenway, up Clay Street, out to Bridgeborough Street, then over Route 130, the bridge, and then doesn't come back until River Drive, go to Amago, Amago Island, from, it comes in from Cinnamon City.
I, I think.
Not South Riverside to, yeah, so it's really kind of just out, that's out.
But I mean.
It's in the woods and at Anderson Farms, in the woods along with Rancoas River, Greenway, comes out by the pump station, comes out to Bridgeborough Street, makes a right, and it goes over the bridge, and then it's gone, and then comes back from Riverside Park and along River Drive to Amago.
But see, he's, he's right, that's what I was thinking as far as tying in, let's say if somebody else in another town had a, had a bikeway path, and he's thinking the same way, but I don't see anything to tie in with.
Does the, does, you know, I, I don't have the path of, you know, in my head to, to, other than, you know, a little bump out, you know, you go to Ken's house, because he's the mayor, that'd be nice, have a little bit of bike traffic.
That's okay.
Go by and say hello.
Let's, no, why don't we, why don't we do the, the one with the community park, try that?
Can we do that? I, I mean, I think that'd be great, I think.
That'd be fantastic to get that.
But, you know, wide enough to get, to get a bike, or?
Define bike, just two wheels or a big four?
They got motorized.
So what would these, what would that safe passage, let me just ask you, just kind of, you know, I'm, I'm just freewheeling here a little bit, if, if we were to do that wide enough, would that path be something that a wheelchair could access?
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and would it be connected to anything, you know, we, we're gonna open Jake's place, we have the buddy ball field, could, could that path get them from there to Notre Dame, or is that just too big?
Well, that's, that's the idea would be to do a trail that connected Delaware Community Park to Notre Dame, so you need a, you need a bridge over to Sutro.
If they had motorized.
This could be, this could be the, the impetus to get that, to start rolling.
Uh, yes, but you're not going to get enough money for the project, you'd get a fraction of it, so you'd be, have to be prepared to put in a large sum of money on your own. That's why Hartford Road was kind of good, because you could get, you could get, I mean, you may apply for the entire length of Hartford Road to put in a bikeway, but if you only get a small fraction of the money you request, you could phase that out in certain segments.
Yes, but I think we are still planning on doing a path there, and, and I think.
Which there, Notre Dame?
Notre Dame to Community Park, so with any funding would help us if anything, and I don't care if it's just a park, it's better than nothing, and then we add to it, hopefully we get a county grant again, and we can apply somewhere that county grant with that and pay for it. And then, my other question is, is it, that, is that ground that we would be taking, is that school property, any of it?
Ground we would be taking.
Yeah, to make the, the path.
No, they're, they're municipal property transactions.
Okay, that's all I make sure.
So the only issue would be the bridging over the creek, and that we didn't have like DDP permits?
Yes.
I say it's a win-win if we can get that.
You know, that, we, it's always a matter of, of.
We actually, we did apply for a grant for that project, I believe it was through the VPRPC for a planning grant, to, to plan the project and, and design it.
So, I mean, now that, now that Jake's Place is about to open, and the park is built, you know, eighty percent.
Yeah, there's still some.
You know, there's still some things to do, but my guess is there'll always be some things to do, but this might be a great time to tie those two big parks together.
Yeah, I mean, we.
And ADA accessibility?
Yep.
Use it.
Anybody else, gosh, you all seem so far away over there.
I, I think it's great, I'm looking at it right now, when you look at it from, you know, the aerial shot, it's, it's, it's right there, it's, Notre Dame is right next to the community park.
Yeah.
Then the other question, I guess it begs, is can we get the community park then connected through to the high school, which I think would be also great.
It kind of is, but you're just not formal.
Well, in other words, for events, allowing people to park at the high school, walk through without any kind of.
I think they do that already.
Do they do it, that they walk?
I don't know.
What's that?
Didn't work.
The, the other thing I want to mention when we're talking about this trail is, I know there was discussion of us doing it as a veterans' trail, I'd like to maybe also see, in, in the, make sure they understand that it's also would be a veterans' type setup.
Okay.
I mean, it's really, this is the grant application, right? It's not a slam dunk.
No, I know, but you could throw out the buzzer.
It's not even a slam dunk, it's a highly competitive, and, and your, and your application lacks certain point getting.
I get you.
Material.
So we're gonna use it for bikes, it's gonna be ADA accessible.
Sure.
It's gonna, it's gonna be veterans' trail, I don't know about veterans.
Good idea.
Hit it whatever you can.
You're a shot.
Yeah. That's not good, we'll plan and prepare for that, that seems like.
So is that, that's just.
That's our bikeway. For municipal, so there's three grants, municipal aid or planning for remainder of Conroe, bikeway, we switch it over from Hartford Bikeway to the bikeway connecting Community Park and Notre Dame, and for Route 130, so on, safe streets of transit, we're going to try to meet with DOT ASAP to find out what, and what they, you know, are willing to accept, and what some things we can do.
That, you know, I think that'd be great, as soon as you get some word, get it to us, we'll get it on the agenda, and we'll.
Okay, yeah, and we'll be ready for resolutions at the June workshop.
And we talked about it before, that those kind of things, I'm telling you, there was an intersection that was blind, where you, where the location that our company used to be, and they had that, one of those thing with the flashing and all this stuff, and I was there for a couple of years, and I noticed that every time, it just was so.
Yeah.
Blatant, and I think we need a little blatant on that highway.
They do, they do these beacons that usually, but it's not symbolized intersection, it's just like a crosswalk, bidlock, crosswalk, across the road, you hit, sometimes you see the yellow sign, it'll blink, and then they have the actual blinkers.
On the crosswalk, we want to add this to actually a symbolized intersection, so it'd be interesting.
Actually, if you go out west, it's very effective out in Arizona and stuff like that.
But once we start doing it, you're gonna see probably the other towns showing the same thing, so.
Yeah, that's good. It's just, you know, what's the technology that's up there now, from the seventies, sixties? I mean, it's alive, there's nothing, there's nothing there, and it's just, it's way more crowded, distracted, high volume congestion, you need, and.
Texting. Yeah, plus there's like a lot of vertical curves, you know, people don't realize on Route 130, you don't see.
Vertical curves, I've never heard that expression before, I like it. I like that, vertical curves. I, I don't know how, I'm trying, so we agreed on, on the, the date.
Right.
For the Jake's Place, so we've, we've done that item. So we're moving right along, so in, in the interest of, of cutting to the chase on the capital budget, tell me if my recollection is correct, Jeff, with all of the items that we've discussed in, in this, if we include them in the capital budget, we're not spending any money, we, we're only making them possibilities.
They're already included in the capital.
So, so we're at the point now where we're deciding which?
You are deciding whether to move forward with an enabling ordinance.
Yes. And is, is that the decision, because I remember there's always been, you know, putting it in the capital budget was always a good idea because you didn't really spend any money.
You made that decision when the budget was adopted.
Okay.
It's in there, and the next step is doing the enabling ordinance, and then the step after that will be the actual purchase, whether it be through bid, state contract, or national contract.
Okay.
Can I ask, let me just ask a question, can we, can we add something to this stuff?
We have to amend the capital budget.
Because we never, I know we talked about doing the kiosk for the park, and I want to talk to Jim about that, it's something that I think we should do because all the other parks have, and we have nothing.
Or?
For the community park.
What kind of a kiosk?
To have a mapping of the fields, and, and a, if we're gonna do the trail, have the trail bit, have the initial people who actually had founded it, like the sign that we had, have that listed on there.
Is this, can this be done with a sign, does it have to be a kiosk, I mean, is this something that requires capital?
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, poor Jim's not gonna be like.
Well, I mean, it depends on how, how you want it to make it, yeah, you can do a decorative kiosk, sign, and all, all level different, there's all different levels of detail.
Yeah, I mean, I think we, I think a sign minimum that shows the trails, I think, you know, moving, moving us, kicking and screaming into the eighties, maybe we do an app for the younger folks, and a map for the folks that don't use apps.
But I mean, say, if you were to go into, let's say, the Anderson Farms.
Yeah.
Or if you were to go into Boundary Creek, they have a kiosk, laser kiosks.
I, you know, I, I, isn't that something we could do with this, with the, you know, with a sign budget?
There's a.
It's just a piece of wood.
It's a wood.
And then they open it up and staple a piece of paper.
Right, and that's what I'm talking about.
So. Does that require capital budget?
I mean, these things cost anywhere from a few thousand to twenty thousand, depending on the level. On the sign, the type of sign, how big you want it, the, the mounting mechanism, you know, frames, borders, every palm.
For capital, I think we should stick with what we have.
It's definitely not six figures, but, you know.
I'm not against a kiosk, I think it's, you know, I think anything we can do that says we have our collective stuff together, it makes sense, but this is, you know, we're, we're spending, this is.
Well, I saw the sign in here, we have a big sign we're replacing in the front too, so that's why I'm saying.
But that's a much bigger item, I, you know, I think we're talking about a couple thousand bucks for a kiosk or a sign.
Which is small, compared to this.
Right.
But that's what we're saying, that doesn't, maybe there's need to be.
Oh, we don't have to be a cap, I got.
I feel like that's a weekend project.
I got, I got.
Yeah, or maybe the scouts will put it together, I mean, seriously, I mean.
Really?
There could be an evil project, I mean, seriously, I mean, it's, if you go to those parks, it's just.
Whatever.
They're on the low level of the. If we flex, if we put the bike paths on the map that goes on, on the sign, can that be, uh, for the grant?
Mash their plan.
Yes.
We printed it.
Well, there you go.
Okay, so that's, we add that, including the kiosk describing that.
Yeah, but.
They're not gonna pay for it, we understand.
I mean, yeah, I mean.
So unless we amend the capital budget to include a kiosk, which I think we could, we would be able to find that money, you know, in, I don't think it's as much money as we think.
I mean, I, what I could do is, I think, I can try to put down the different levels of kiosk or signage, and then different costs associated with them, and then, you know, bring it to, back to council to, you know, determine and make a decision on, you know, how much money they want to put towards it, like apply a budget to it, and then we go.
Yeah, let's see what we're looking at.
I don't know, Jeff tells us both, we don't have any money for it.
Yeah. Poor Jeff, so, so let's talk about these items, so we really need to discuss if there's anything that we can eliminate here, or schedule if we need to say, well, that'll be next year, that'll be this year, Jeff, do you want to lead us in this discussion?
Sure. We'll first start with audio visual, and this number is high, you know, it doesn't mean we're gonna spend it, we don't spend it if we don't borrow it, just sort of, I know, even if we do a bond ordinance for sixty thousand dollars for an item, we don't borrow the money to actually buying the item, so if it comes in at thirty thousand dollars, that's what we end up borrowing. The first one was audio visual for the courtroom, what we originally started with is we need approximately seventy-five hundred dollars to purchase, we're gonna need to put a TV, What we originally started with is we need approximately seventy-five hundred dollars to purchase, we're gonna need to put a TV, I forget if it's this wall or this wall. Put a giant screen TV for the, the processing of prisoners at the county. It's a system that basically the state and the county have set the parameters for that, and that's a requirement. And then, the second, secondary item was the issues that came up more recently where council members have indicated they might want either screens or other TVs. And to improve the sound system, we have estimates coming on. The sound system, they seem to be in the area of ten or eleven thousand dollars to completely improve that. I don't have the new updated estimates on, on possible screens, they did come out and take a look at putting, I think it was over here, they were looking at putting it. And we should be getting a number there, it'll probably be less than this figure, sixty thousand for all of those items, but that's essentially a high-end number. That's number one. Second item. Uh, we, we did have some funds in the budget that you authorized last year for a sound system, so we probably won't have to budget that whole amount. Second item is actually, it's not a teddy, but it's, it's the wrong figure. The workstation upgrade and the computer upgrade and the server upgrades, roughly sixty-five thousand dollars. The server and the, most of our computers are running under programs that will not be serviced after January two thousand and nineteen. A lot of towns are in this position. We also had the cyber expert from the insurance fund come in, review all the items and upgrade the things that we would need in terms of upgrading firewalls. Upgrading servers, upgrading equipment, so that we have less opportunity for someone to get into the systems and, and impact our systems.
So that's all covered in the fifty thousand dollars?
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five, so this should be sixty-five.
It should be sixty-five.
So that, for those following along at this table, so we're gonna say the last sentence of the second paragraph is actually item number two.
Jeff, is that, I know that Jeff has grant programs and all, last time I was at the seminar for that, I know we spoke about cybersecurity grants, is that something that can help us out?
Yeah, it's roughly, I think ours is roughly twenty-five hundred dollars, so one of the things we're gonna be doing, that, it is a quote in here that we're not going to do. We found a different way, we talked about putting a cabinet, having our server in a cabinet. Instead of that, what we're gonna do is with the copy room, we're gonna put a similar system to what we have to get in this hallway with the numbering system. It, it seems like a better option, putting things in a cabinet, back in that copy room. It's something that people can access, but quite frankly, even if we put that in a cabinet, the, the public shouldn't be able to access that. And that door's open all the time, if people wanna walk in, they could, and get involved with other items in there. So, we're gonna put in the punch-in system, I think it's seven hundred dollars, for something similar to what's on this hallway. That, you know, we have in place other than the council meetings, we open it up for council meetings. But we're gonna go to that, instead, we'll use some of that money for that, and we can use the remainder for upgrading it, but I think the total's twenty-five hundred, so.
That's not too much, but it's good.
Eighteen hundred dollars towards this year.
Great, thanks.
Yeah, that, that, just having, that, I mean, that's really the, the heart of the system is in there. That door open is, that's always been kind of an issue. So, so we're talking about sixty-five thousand for all of those upgrades, the workstation and the network?
Yes.
Well, those are certainly in today's world, those are critically important, and they're, we're gonna call them number two, for the sake of keeping track, next is the Public Works.
Public Works Department, I'm actually surprised Jeff is not here, quite first equipment, but maybe the factory's in the employment. This is wow. A pickup truck with spreader and plow for forty-five thousand dollars, an interstate tractor with mowers for a hundred, thirty-five thousand. Three new hook trucks, salt spreaders for sixty thousand, three new hook truck decks for twenty-two thousand, estimated two-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand for Public Works. If, I don't know if you remember back to the capital budget, but most of the items that he's replacing are between twenty-two and twenty-four years old. They're well-maintained, we get a lot of life out of them, but eventually salt does get to them, no matter how often we clean them, it does get to them, but the items last. And they're items that get used significantly. And the interstate tractor, that's the tractor that cuts the fields, and you can see them during this course, this time of year. Grass is just growing so quickly that they can barely keep up with it, and that mower has been breaking down every once in a while. Again, that's like, next, that's a twenty-year-old too.
That's the big one, the, the side drive, yeah.
So that, that one big mower is a hundred-and-thirty-five thousand dollars?
Yeah.
So, so kind of in conjunction with that, what do you call that group, that paragraph, item three? And then the municipal building upgrade, Jerry's talking about the coolant tower, what, what, what can you tell us about?
Yeah, the coolant tower, we're being told has, also is starting to leak, and we have issues with that, and we're being told that needs to be replaced pronto. There's really no way to repair it, it's original with the building.
No.
There's really no way around that.
And let's call that four as a separate item so that we don't get confused. And then, the rest of the municipal maintenance, we'll call five, and that includes the, the signage and the copiers and the painting. So, so let's talk about the signage first, we have some samples that we've seen, and frankly, some of them look a little, a little oversized.
It's just to give you an idea of what the, what the company does. They estimated to, to replace what we have out there in a similar size, but with the electronics on, it'd be in the sixty-five thousand dollar range.
And you said we have money, ten grand?
Yeah, we budgeted last year in a capital that we did not spend because we had given a proposal of just basically upgrading what was there, looking exactly alike.
Yeah, we.
What was out there, and that was something that we rejected, so.
And we're gonna do it, I think we should do it right.
Just as, as, for those folks, do you have the, do you have the?
Who's the member?
I think it's the watch fire, so it's this, it's this page on the sheet, so, you know, trying to keep it in something that's maybe appropriate for the location. I like that thing that says the Chamber of Commerce, Tranberry Township, you know.
Yeah, these are all over still.
I think the Dylan, Colorado is just much too much, this, is this, this is, I'm assuming these are all two-sided?
Signs of both sides.
Yes, yes, no, it's on the side. I don't think any, Jeff, none of these are what they're proposing for us, this is just.
No, just giving you an idea of what.
Yeah, so that, we don't even have specs of what we're gonna look at.
So, all right, so then, you know, what I'm saying is, these giant monuments and the double-sided V-shaped, I think they're a bit much for us. And, but, I think we, we need to get those quotes, now what about?
It's two-sided, remove existing monument, reuse existing footies, install, like, footies, install new monument. So, basically, you're gonna be double-sided electronic, that's roughly the same size as what's out there.
It just, some bricks to put it out, all right.
Yeah.
And that includes the police and EMS signs, right?
Yes, it does, the other two signs as well.
It does include them?
Yes.
Oh, that's great, cause they're getting kind of embarrassing. So, you, you'll be able to get some estimates from, from them?
That is the estimate, I mean, we can get a better idea of the size of the sign, I'm pretty sure the sign.
Let's take a look at what, what styles, whatever they have, and get moving on that. All right, so, let's get back to the number, let's get back to number three, which is all the Public Works Department vehicles. Yeah, do we need to get, this is how the discussions always go, so I'll just jump right in. Do we need to get all of this equipment all at once? Seems like there's a new spreader for the, for the plow, and then there's also additional for the hook truck. How many, how many new plowing situations will we have, I was, I read this through.
This is to replace existing, those items are replaced existing equipment that's rotting out.
These are all replacements.
Right.
So what was, what was the thing with the, we got the, um, we got this, I wanna call them cube trucks, the, the new things for the, for the leaf trucks. Is, which, which of those was here, is, is part of this, is part of that here with the?
The arms though.
What did, what did, I just read it again.
Yeah, we, we're, we're good with those, we've purchased.
Okay, so, but it just seemed like one of these said, we would take, make those vehicles available for plowing as well.
Right.
Would that be?
Which we can do, which, yes, that's what the plows.
So, would, would those be additional vehicles, or would they be replacing trucks that are just falling apart at the seams?
They're not. You're, you're mixing, you're mixing two things up, they wanna, they wanna red, for lack of a better word, retrofit those box trucks to put spreaders on.
Right.
Multi-use, instead of just picking up leaves, and then when it's a salt and sanding and plowing situation, you can't use them because they can't spread.
Right.
So what they're looking to do is buy the, the units to put on the back of them, so they can use for both functions.
So would they be, in, in addition to replacing the additional plows?
They would, they would keep you from having to purchase trucks.
Oh, okay, so it seems, I, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't replacing those trucks and adding these three new hook trucks to the, to the fleet.
That would be a way bigger number.
Yeah, yeah, okay, I just, I just wanted to make sure, the way I read it, I was a little confused, so, all right.
Jeff, so we're not, just to clarify, we're not adding new, there's not gonna be more plows on the street, we're just upgrading it.
Well.
You've got more ability to spread.
Right, you, you'd actually have the ability to put more plows on the road.
All right, well, that's good, Jeff.
With the same amount of equipment that you have now.
Other than the one.
Gotcha.
Cause you're utilizing your other stuff to do more for you.
So that makes sense.
Cause if you can plow at the front end, but you can't spread on the back end, what are you doing? So that's, that's, you're gonna, you're actually gonna have more on the street without buying new vehicles, you just have to put the unit on the back. Oh, what we, we're finding, and luckily we didn't have a lot of stuff, but what we're finding is that we don't have, you actually need more trucks than we have men. With the smog, because there's gonna be a piece of equipment that breaks down, and unless you wanna take that off the road and have that guy sitting around, you need some backups. This will allow us, plus we're hiring an additional man, so this will allow us to put a little bit more force out on the road.
Jeff, for any of the items that we're replacing, the old stuff that's rotting, is there any inherent value to that that we, we see back once we replace them?
If there's any value at all, yeah, we put on govdeals.com, it's a, it's a state, well, it's an actual auction. We've gotten good returns on equipment from that, one of the things that we sold was all the top-line equipment out on Conroe Park, we got a significant amount of money for that. Usually, in the past, we would get like a hundred dollars or two hundred, but we've done real well with govdeals.com, getting thousands for equipment, quite frankly, that we're ready to throw out.
Right.
Yes.
Jerry's been very proactive with that, very proactive, too.
So, the tower, it sounds like we actually need that.
Yeah, I mean, we definitely need the mower, because there's one big mower, if that mower's down. It's a little one.
You need all the Public Works stuff and you need the coolant towers.
I think the only thing that's available is whether or not you wanna paint the building, quite frankly. You know, it, it was when we put up the new coping and the new colors, it was, we were kinda looking at, well, we're gonna change the color of the building because it's not a hundred percent perfect match. And you can see some of the darkening, darkening going on, it needs to be done, doesn't need to be done this year, and that's up to you guys.
I'm gonna tell you another one that you have down in your back pocket, is the HVAC. That's gonna be a big one that you should start really looking at, possibly at the latest next year.
So, the coolant tower is tied to that, I don't know, the coolant tower is.
It, agri-place is what you have.
Yeah.
For, for, what, it's coolant for the HVAC, air for the air.
Yes.
But, and that'll work with, with.
Revamping of the entire system?
We revamped the entire system, does it make sense to spend seventy-five thousand dollars on a coolant tower?
So what do you do, do you fix it to, I mean, you gotta weigh how much did it cost to fix it, and how much to, you know, keep it going until you get there too, so.
You don't have much of an option.
That's what you have to weigh.
Well, that's, I mean, that's really my concern, that we're spending seventy-five thousand dollars for a coolant tower that may or may not work with a new coolant system.
So what do you do then?
Yeah, well, that's what I'm, that's.
Well, you're, you're talking, you're probably talking over a million dollars, or you are talking over a million dollars. For a new HVAC system, so unless you're ready to do that this year, your coolant tower can go at any time.
Is there any way to plan though, to make sure whatever we get as a coolant tower would be compatible with maybe a planned future?
Probably not, I wouldn't think it will be.
I doubt it too.
I thought you were talking about doing second zones.
Yes.
It's just a completely different system, I mean, this is such a hole.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what a coolant tower does exactly, I mean, is, is it like a condenser, but it's a tower?
Yeah.
And, and let me ask you a question, if you were to spend seventy-five thousand dollars on a coolant tower. In the long run, for a year, does it pay to do the tower? Or does it pay to just try to maintain it and do it to get whatever we get out of it?
Well, I, I, I can't answer that question, I mean, I don't, they're telling you has to be replaced, that there's no more maintenance or repair you can do to it. You know, I, I don't see a project to redo the entire HVAC system within a year, you know, without having substantial money already set aside for it and designed and, and everything to get going, so it sounds like.
Let me ask that question another way. If, can, if we purchase that tower, is there any govdeals.com resale value? So if we add it, we have a tower, I mean, are we the only one, are the only people on earth with this type of?
Oh, we're. We, we may be, no. We, I can, we can look into that issue, I mean, I'm, we'll get you more definition on this issue, what, what I've been told is that, is that the coolant tower up there is in deep trouble. And we need to move on it, and I didn't think that anybody was ready to swallow the HVAC system at this point, I mean, not that it.
We gotta be close.
Not that it doesn't need to be done at some point, I mean, the issue is it'll make it more efficient from a cost standpoint, and it'll make it a lot more comfortable. The problem here is you cannot equalize the, the cooling and the heating in this building, is the things that we really get hurt on. And I'm sure by doing it, a zone system will be a lot more efficient, because the police are always hot, they're wearing vests. That's not the case over here, so if we, you get a zone, it would certainly be more comfortable, but.
My feeling is if we're keeping this building, and we're gonna continue to maintain this building and put money into this building for everything that we're doing, I think it's a critical piece that you need to do eventually. And we have been putting it off because of the money situation, but at the same time, we're spending money on other things, and HVAC system's important, just like the dollar right now. So, that's something you have to consider.
Didn't we have the electric company, especially with the S, come out? I mean, is there any, the program all sales, or was that something?
The return on investment was so far out that it really wasn't one of the recommended items, I mean, basically, you guys gotta swallow it if you want. It was not a big enough return on investment, it was out there like thirty-some years or more, I think. It wasn't like LED lights in the corner, huh?
I like that, like, I mean, I, people have to realize, I was, you and I, Tyler, we're talking about it, I mean, the counties invested a lot into their buildings. And their, their infrastructure, and they've been redoing and fixing their things, we need to do that, we haven't been doing it.
Well, I mean, I think Gary brings up a good point, if in twelve months or eighteen months, we replace that whole thing.
Well, I agree, so.
We gotta make sure we're, we're taking the right steps forward.
Totally agree.
To Jeff's point, you know. Let me get more definition on the coolant tower, whether or not there would be value to it, if we were to buy it now to someone else. Or if there's any way we can salvage what we got for a little bit longer.
I could check with Longo on, on mechanical engineering to see, just to confirm that that tower, whether or not that'd be part of any new system.
For something else.
So here's, here's, here's how I see this money for this coolant tower. I see this is, this is, this is money that we, we're gonna need to spend, but it's very possibly gonna be wasted when we replace it, it's gonna be obsolete. So what I'm thinking is, I'm on the lines of a conversation, how much would it cost to try and, you know, keep this together with duct tape and bubble gum for another year or two? If it costs us thirty thousand dollars to get it repaired, that's cheaper than seventy-five thousand dollars, you have a brand-new coolant tower on a forty-year-old building, or however old this building is. And that, we're gonna, it's gonna be obsolete in maybe two years, so let's find out what it would cost maybe to fix, and.
Can't be fixed, I thought you said.
I had no comment, and I don't know if that was.
I'm sure that it can be, but we'll need information.
Well.
That's what I was go, that's what I was going by, but we never said. All right.
We need to find an old HVAC guy, who knows, who was around when these systems were around, cause I.
We'll check on govdeals.com, see if there's one.
See, maybe there's one old there, that's why I want for a steal, it's like the Craigslist of government.
We'll get, we'll get you in there, I know what you're looking for.
Okay, great, so, so we're really talking about approving all of these, and, and Jeff, because these are very big numbers, I need you to help us to understand what impact this has. You know, on, on the, frankly, on the taxpayer. So what, what does this do by way, you know, the debt service comes to, almost, well, my quick estimation, three-quarters of a million dollars? And I'm, and I'm just, I'm just doing a quick eyeball on this, whatever it comes to. Two sixty-five, two twenty-five, that's almost five, and another sixty, seventy-seven, thirty-one, forty. So, three, you know, whatever this number is, we'll get this number, three-quarters of a million dollars. This is all money that we'll borrow and pay against a debt service, right? I mean, we're not talking about spending a million dollars that we're gonna pay for right away.
Yeah, right.
This is, this is amortized and we're like.
Depends on the useful life of each piece of equipment, I'll break it down for you, cause some. I'll break it down for you, because some of them only have a five-year useful life, some have fifteen, and that impacts the, how long we can do out on the bond. So I'll break it out for you, and you'll get what the impact on the budget will be if you were to go for all of it.
Right. So, you know, we've always been very prudent about, well, we can replace sixteen radios eight at a time, we'll do this and that. It sounds like, I don't, other than the painting and the scheme of things, the painting is the, is the, is one of the lower end. It's a big single item, but it's in comparison to the big picture. Maybe you can do it, give us an estimate with the painting, without the painting? I appreciate that. And if we can, if you can work some magic on the coolant tower, it'd be awesome. We would all be very happy about that. Anybody have any other thoughts, Tyler?
Yeah, I mean, real quick, I don't wanna go back down that path. Do we have, like, any numbers with the air conditioning? Do we know how much an air conditioning system would cost?
We, we did when the, we had numbers when the company came in and did a whole evaluation of the entire building. Okay, so we're, I mean, they, they're rough numbers and they're a little bit aged, but.
You said one point's.
It's over a million, six million. I'm good for it.
I just wanna know if we were talking one million, two million, three million, so we can at least begin to think about swallowing that pill. We have to do that.
There's a whole report that explains, like, everything that they see was, that's wrong, it's just what you're gonna do to break, break what needs to be.
Yeah. We could see that.
You did that work.
That'd be great. Like, to catch, I mean, if we gotta go down that, we don't wanna start.
Well, I just see that as a more critical thing than doing a sign for sixty-five thousand and video for sixty-five. We're spending all this money on different stuff, we should look at things that are critical to the building. And that's where I'm at.
Well, unfortunately, it's not on the calendar this year, but that's why I just asked you.
Something to put in.
So, for, you know, next year, maybe we look at just doing that.
Yeah.
You know, and, and let me buy. I'm gonna, uh.
Thank you, Jeff.
I'm gonna suggest, when do we lose you, Councilman? Okay, so let's do, I'm gonna jump to item number nine. I've had some pretty adamant conversations about this with individual council folks. And the street opening request for Hartford Road is, isn't making anyone at this table happy. So, I'm gonna suggest maybe that we ask New Jersey American Water how they could get that water there, maybe from Bridgeport Road.
What se, what section of Hartford is this?
Right.
It's right across, right from the new. Right where we just did?
Yeah.
Yep, it's a non-starter.
Yeah, well, I mean, we, we, the tower and I talked about it real quick. I'm gonna tell you something, if they were willing to redo, re-mill and do everything over again.
Go ahead.
Then go ahead.
They'd have to overlay the, the whole road.
Right.
Yeah, redo that whole road like we did.
I, I think, I think.
Totally agree with you.
Can they come in from Bridgeport? There's gotta be a main down that road.
There is a main, and they probably wanna loop it.
I don't know what that means.
They wanna have two points of connection of the water. So they have, they're bringing in, if they're doing a water connection on Bridgeport, they want a second connection on Hartford.
And what's the reason?
What, what are they trying to tackle? It just gives, uh, you know.
See you later.
The water is almost.
Okay, so here's my, I mean, you would think that they're gonna be making a hell of a lot of money on that project, probably getting money from all that stuff. Maybe they need to do the road.
Yeah, tell them, tell them, you know, I, I, I think, and, and you all have to express your opinion here. You know, I've had private conversations with all, I don't know whether Tom and I connected on this particular.
But you probably say the same.
But, but, you know, I know personally, I feel very adamant that there's a moratorium for a reason, because I've seen those patches come in and be done, and, oh, we'll pave half, and there's still a seam down the middle of the damn road. We just spent a fortune on that road, and, and there's a moratorium for five years. Figure out another way. I think that's.
Or they redo the road?
Or they, if they, now, could they do that, do an overlay on the whole road without having to mill? I mean, could they just put another layer?
No, you have to mill.
Have to mill. They'd have to mill what we just did.
I mean.
That's ridiculous.
I mean, they're not gonna do the whole road, but if you, if you gave them a certain limit. If you want the whole road done, I mean, yeah, yeah. If you wanna, if you wanna sit, that's fine, I mean.
You know, I, we, we, I think, Tom, help me, because you haven't really weighed in with me on this. If you, if you, if you want to, if not, I'll take your silence as you agree with what I'm saying. You know, no, we're not gonna break the moratorium. You know, so they gotta bring water in another way.
I mean, they're gonna realize that we just did that road. I mean, we're not gonna deal with it.
New Jersey American knew, knew that we were paving the road too, because they put in a tap.
So what'd they tell us?
They put in a water tap for Willowbrook. So Willowbrook is outside the road.
So why didn't they do it for this?
I don't know why they didn't do it for Stuller.
So they're stupid, you think?
I don't know.
Their, their poor plant is gonna force them to figure out another way.
I could, I can, I could tell you, I mean, the trench repair would be different than your normal trench repair, but what the limits of resurfacing that may be required, that's, you tell, you tell us.
I see this as an issue, that the citizens are gonna be outraged by this, because, because I feel that way. I mean, we just spent a lot of money, and now we're just gonna rip it up, and it's gonna look terrible. And it's not, and then it's.
And we have to deal with the repercussions then?
That's gonna degrade faster. I, I just think that's.
It's a no-brainer.
A moment of insanity to, to agree to that. I don't think we can.
Especially that road, we're not talking about my street.
Yeah, I mean.
Now, if they got the county to take it over, then we'd maybe consider it.
So, so, at this point, we have to deal with it as it is, and we, we own that road right now. And, and I think, I know, I'm seeing some shaking heads, I got one cold-faced, Matt, answer the question.
Well, I'll be meeting with some American Water officials later this week, I could express, express what I think.
Yeah, you can tell them you all feel the same way you feel.
So.
You live by there, I know.
They have, they, they're very resourceful, and they have deep pockets, and when there's a will, there's a way.
And that's where I live.
And that needs to be expressed to them.
Correct.
That we are adamant about the moratorium, and you have very capable engineers, either on staff or you contract out, and you gotta figure out a different way.
The trenching across the entire.
They're going across that road.
Yep.
Or maybe they have connections with the county where they can convince the county to take it over and let the county go and do it.
Well, we have to deal with the issue as, as it stands, and I, I think, unless, you tell me, Alan, if we need to memorialize this in some process, but seeing the faces on the council people, the answer is no.
So, Council President, I believe the resolution's already placed a moratorium on it, so no action means moratorium stays in place.
Okay. Everybody seems to be in agreement with that, and, and.
Nobody's saying that they don't need water, you know?
Right.
They need water.
They don't have water from Bridgeport.
Yeah. This has nothing to do with where it's going. This has to do with, we're planning it, as far as we're concerned.
Jeff, just real briefly, I mean, Jim, the, having the system looped, as you mentioned, do you know what the benefit to that is?
It's, it's just, it provides a secondary means for water to get into the site that they have to ever shut down one end.
I see.
It's better, and it's also better for the poor quality of water.
So maybe they put in one path, and then five months.
And wait five years to do the rest. That's, that may certainly be the option.
Well, that's where, I mean, in different situations, when these come up, the NUA, sewage authority, or whatever, works with the project, and they do that, or the road is done.
True, right.
Because that's, because they know, we only have that one supply. So if something goes wrong, I gotta kill a neighborhood. And when they put the second one in, then there's another way to get water into the neighborhood. So when they work together, when they open the street up, whatever you're doing on the street, to put that in. This wasn't done, and that's shame on them. I, you know.
If they do it for five years, it'll be a five-year to the road.
So maybe they, maybe they.
If your purpose is this would just be a denial.
Yes.
To the applicant, and if, if they have a question, you point it to the moratorium. And you advise that the councils consider this matter, and that they.
Yeah.
They have not waived the moratorium.
We've already denied it, but we hold on, we would bring it to council.
Okay, great. Just wanna make sure they're paid their fees.
So the council are no action.
Well, and New Jersey American Water Works.
Well.
Oh, well.
They never have.
I'm sure.
I haven't received any calls on it, so.
I've been getting some emails from.
Councilwoman, when you have to leave, just let us know, and, and, so, and we're gonna go back to item number.
I'm surprised if I know.
Next is item, are we gonna move on? Next is item eight, the donated leave program. I, I think this is, this is just the, who's got the latest update?
Jeff, you can take it or I can take it.
I'll start, is that we drafted the donated leave programs, and the Department of Civil Service, Civil Service sent back some changes that they wanted, Alan's incorporated some of the changes. There's some additional information that we have to provide to them.
That was your name, your name and that kind of stuff, just to find points. We have a designated, it says administrator.
Just to clarify for council, none of the changes requested, requested by the DCA were really substantive, at least from where I'm standing. It's essentially formal resubstance. They want some additional paperwork and some additional information from Jeff in terms of crossing Ts and dotting Is, in terms of touching base with the unions and stuff like that.
Yeah, I mean, if you're happy with it, specific Jeff, and we'll provide all the answers and.
Yeah, I agree.
And you put, Tom?
I'll tell you what, donated leave programs, I, I find it hard to believe that unions be against it. Actually, one union is who initiated it. The only step, I did, I didn't realize, I, I didn't see it in their original list, I don't think it was actually in there, but they've asked for it since then, so I sent that out to the second union. So, that is a healthy issue.
It's actually originated from the union.
It's a, it's a positive.
Yeah, I, I think.
Even if you don't, even if you don't get all your, your whole wish list, it's better than what you have.
Yeah, it's a good.
It's a bonus.
I, I, I know people who've actually benefited from that in private industry, that it was a godsend, so.
We've actually done it here with a pilot program before the legislation existed. They allowed us, a couple towns, to do it as a pilot program, probably almost twenty years ago.
Wow. It just makes sense. Okay, so.
So it's essentially done, we're just waiting for the DCA to put their stamp and prove before it's introduced, but it's basically done in a state of osmosis.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay.
So they say, okay, well, we introduce.
Okay. We have, any reports this evening, starting with, we completed the agenda of the close session right now this evening. Jimmy, do you have anything for us tonight?
Nothing.
Nothing. Jeff, do you have anything in open for us tonight?
Just one item is that I had two residents come to me during the course of the day. They came at different times, they weren't together, but they both live on North Chester Avenue. Both are experiencing problems with water coming from a sump pump on the North Chester. For those who've been around a while, this issue has been with us for a long time. The entire street is within the bounds of Riverside. The homes, however, are in Delran. They had asked us to, some of the residents had asked us to contact Riverside to see if there's something they need to do. We did contact Riverside, Riverside's aware of it, just like us. They have a priority list in terms of building streets, it hasn't gotten to their priority list, and I think the letter started in two thousand and seven, so it's been twelve years. One gentleman indicated that our Riverside was gonna do something on the Riverside side, but not do something on the Delran side. I put, I did say I'd put a call in, and I did, but I didn't get an answer, the legislature wasn't here today, or didn't get activated anywhere. And I'll follow up on it, but we're not likely, the one resident's gonna come to Delran, so we can see what you guys can do, and what we can do.
So, let me just, let me just clarify. The road is a hundred percent Riverside, correct? The road itself?
Yes.
Okay. So, that's an issue. I did have a conversation with Virginia, because it's her ward this afternoon, and she reminded me that, that there was always an issue with that road with the pitch. So if you remember, Jim, that's kind of a, what do they call that?
It's flat.
It's flat? I was gonna say, what do they call it? Well, it's flat, and it's called flat.
It's not only flat, Chester, there's almost no storm drains.
Yeah, well, and plus, everybody has their sump pumps discharging to the curb.
Right.
So it's always wet.
And there's no spurs.
There's no stormwater.
Storms.
Well, I think of inlet down by River and Chester.
But it's not, it's not pitched to go down there. It's pitched to just go, it's.
Well, I mean, there's pitch in the road, it's just that the water, the basins are always pumping stormwater out, so it's pumping groundwater out. So it's always wet, because the water's always being pumped into the street.
Correct.
So.
So we've been, we've been down there for a while.
I mean, we've been, we've talked about this a lot, you know, it, yeah.
It, it needs some sort of sump pump collection system to tie directly to the stormwater, that's what.
That, that would be on the private property?
No, it would be within the right of way.
In the right of way?
Which is, which is Riverside right of way.
From what I understand, Riverside owns the entire right of way, including, including, like, typically, the right-of-way line is about ten feet from the curb.
So we technically can't even do anything unless they would give us permission to, to do it on the road.
Or you'd be working in Riverside.
Right. We, it'd be like going, saying, well, I see a problem in my neighbor's yard, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go fix it on our dime.
But you can't unless they.
You know, unless, but they have to, it's, it's, that's a weird situation, that it's not our road or our right of way to fix. It's really their problem, the Riverside's problem, but, you know, we've had this discussion several times in the past.
But it's a Delran, and it's a Delran resident, though, that lives on this Riverside road.
The old Delran resident.
I got you.
On the one side.
On the one side, yes.
On the south side of Chester.
Who claims the road? I mean, who plows it? I'm sorry.
We don't, we don't pick our plow up when we go down that road, because we have to plow streets or adjacent. We do not pick our plow up. So.
We, we didn't pave it.
Yeah, no.
My understanding is at one point the county owned it and paved it. That's what I was told, that is before my time, so. So, and the county does, that, you know, county owns Chester Avenue, not North Chester.
Does, does Rivers, the section of the people on the other side of Chester, that live on the Riverside side, do they have the same ponding issues?
It's not ponding for some, it's just flowing water, not just.
Yeah, do they have the same issues?
They have similar issues. I'm not sure if that's bad.
So, I guess the best, or what we could do, though, is reach out to Riverside and, and talk to them about the problem, which maybe we have already, I don't know. And they just, they're very unaware, and they haven't done anything, and they don't.
It's just like.
I got you.
Issues that we have is that we have priorities, and it got to the top of their priorities.
Hi, Jeff. It's just a ghost that's in the, in the room. Okay, so.
But I did say I would reach out to Riverside just to see if there's anything else.
I'll.
There'll be roof platters in the past, where they're asking on behalf of the Delran residents, because they do pay taxes at Delran.
Right.
See what they can do, but I thought it'd bring to your attention, because, like I said, I had two visitors one day about the issue, and one of them said he'd come to a council meeting, so.
Okay, well, thank you. Mr. President, I mean, if we could, could we do that again, send the letter? I mean, it doesn't hurt us to send the letter.
It's what he is, though, he's.
Jeff, it's not my phone, but I'd like you to, if you would, send a letter, or a copy of that. Maybe send, send us a copy of the letter, so that we don't have it for discussions.
I mean, at least we'll do our part.
Because it's her, her ward.
At least we'll try, you know, we'll do our part to send the message.
Okay. Jim, anything for us tonight?
Uh, no, I mean, so we're working on the road program design, we're hoping to have it advertised by the end of June. I met with the county today, Matt Johnson, who's Resource Conservation, who's handling the trails project to coordinate the improvements down on, on River Drive. I'll come back to it with that, and I, I'm gonna get to review with Jeff here, but most likely, I think what's gonna happen is they're gonna do all their improvements, with all their concrete curving and trail improvements, then we come in and resurface the road, and then they come back and do all the striking and signage. So they'd be doing all our concrete work, and we'd be doing the paving work through there, which we're planning on doing anyway, and it makes it one complete project.
Right.
They'd be, we'd be, we'd be doing a little bit of paving, but that's cheaper for us, and they'd be handling all the, like, more expensive concrete work that we want to pay. So the thing is, time, timing's gonna be an issue, because they, they receive bids June sixth, and it's a federally funded project. Uh, so that, I got any more details on, on their construction timeline? Their contract's gonna be about two hundred days, so they don't know if the contractor wants to have him on board and it's approved for, knows, perceived for construction, if they can get all the work that we need them to get done in time to have us be able to repave the road this fall.
What's our bid date?
We don't, we haven't not said it yet, but, you know, we're, 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 you know, always have a goal of having it built this year, so
So bid date?
We didn't set it.
No, sorry.
Oh, um, probably like the middle of July to have it awarded after July workshop.
Have it awarded?
Yeah.
So when would it go out? Where's it at?
It would, no, it doesn't go out until we advertise, which would probably be advertised hopefully by the end of June.
And is, is, does our bid have any dependencies on them, or have you straight built it out?
No, that, that's the thing, so our, our improvements over there are going to require them to have to come in and do all the concrete work before we pave.
So maybe delay
So if anything, yeah, I mean, worst-case scenario, and I don't wanna really come to you yet before I had a schedule from them, is we don't do River and Norman, or, we don't do River, we probably do Norman and Lake. But we don't do River until the spring, because that's how long it takes them to get
Yeah.
Their concrete work done. But at the same time, no, you're getting improvements funded in advance. And, and that's where I think the worst-case scenario, they might, if, I mean, they're receiving bids June sixth, it's gonna take about a month or two to get everybody to bless it, and the fielders to bless it, and then federal, the feds to give them the, the go-ahead. Uh, if we can get the contractor out to go do that segment of the project first, we might be, it might be just in time for our budget.
Okay. I, I just, I just think, because the folks know that it's coming, that if we're gonna have a, a delay of any magnitude, let's, let's send them a notice.
We'll send out notices, yes.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we could
Yeah.
Just let, keep them informed.
Let's keep them informed. Here's where we are.
They see three roads down there done, and there's this
Yeah, here's the status, just because of the improvements with the county, we're coordinating the same.
I know you send them notices anyway.
Yeah, we sent out most of them already, I think. We have to send out, we didn't send notices to, to deletion roads, yeah. We'll wait till we see what it is.
Right. Right, makes sense.
Although they're aware of all the lists.
They're not calling. Oh, what, uh, Lee?
The other one.
What else? We should get it done.
Okay, anything else?
Uh, no, I mean, we're just, I mean, we're aware of Jake's place, and the contractor's moving along, so
Yeah.
I think they're doing
Is the cement work done?
No, but they, they're doing a port in place sometime in early June, so we should be good.
But the cement, okay, it's been done before that, right?
Yes.
Okay.
But that's on the verge of doing it. He's getting the stonework done this week, and then be ready to pour concrete. The cement work's not that, it's only
Yeah. Can't wait.
Have you been involved with the handicap accessible corners on, on Creek? County's been doing handicap access ramps.
Yeah, I just saw that yesterday myself.
Yeah.
Where in Creek?
Delran.
The entrance to the Grand.
And, and sorry.
Are they getting ready to be the Creek Road?
I don't know. No, they're putting the, the actual handicap pads in. And then my concern is, and maybe you should talk to them, is the, the areas that they didn't do next to the, the handicap pad, they're still not filled yet, and they have, they should put a cone or something. I hate to see somebody
Wow. I would imagine that they're getting ready to pave it. 'Cause that's what, that's usually
The only thing is, like I said, they did the pad part, but the ones next to it, the sidewalk itself
I'll take a look, and I'll reach out to the county.
They have it, they have it backfill.
Right.
They have it backfill.
Okay. How long ago when did they do the concrete work?
And they've just, just done it.
Yeah, I'd say about two, three days ago.
Ah.
But I'm just saying, I just, it would be nice at least if they had a cone there or something, because I hate to see somebody, it's a big drop.
Okay, I'll, I can
And they did a nice job, don't get me wrong.
I can email the county tomorrow, I'm surprised that we haven't heard that they're paving the road.
I know, I was, that's what I'm surprised.
Yep. We never got those.
I mean, I'm, I'm not, I'm not sitting here saying
I'm glad they are.
Usually, you don't go and just replace the handicap ramps unless you're paving the road, because you have to if you pave the road.
Well, they're not replacing, they never had them, they're making these handicap ramps now. Which is great.